From parks and recreation projects to roadway improvement plans, your input plays an important role in shaping the future of Hillsborough County. So make your voice heard by visiting hcflgov.net/hcengage.
Hillsborough County's Customer Service Center makes submitting a service request quick and simple, directly notifying the responsible service team. You can create a user account to make tracking the progress of your service request virtually effortless. Simply click on the appropriate service tab and then select from a list of common requests. Or provide a description of any concern that is not listed. Enter the reported address manually to allow us to pinpoint the request. Including specific details and pictures helps guide service providers in fulfilling your request. Creating an account and logging in with your username gives you the ability to track the progress of all your requests to completion. Hillsborough County's customer service requests are just that simple. We're at your service 24/7. When storms start to blow and danger strikes, we come together to face any challenge as a community. And when trouble hits our county, HCFL Alert is your number one source for information. HCFL Alert is with you before, during, and after the storm. To sign up, visit hcflgov.net/hcflalert so we know how and when to notify you about local emergencies. The safest way through bad weather is together.
Good afternoon and welcome to the December 13th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Land Development Code text amendment workshops. We'll begin with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment workshop before I pass things over to Melissa Leinhart to introduce the items. With the clerk, have a roll call to establish attendance.
Herr Hagan? Cameron Cepeda?
Here.
Cohen? Cam?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wasso?
Here.
You have a form, sir.
I'm Melissa. You want to introduce the first item?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the record, Melissa Leinhart with Planning Commission staff. I just wanted to let you know that we have just recently today gotten a continuance request for item A4 so that item will not be heard today. That application is officially continuing to the January cycle of plan amendments. So you all will see that request for a briefing scheduled in March of 2024 for next year. With that, I can introduce item A1, which Jillian Massey will be presenting. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm just trying to share my screen.
For the record, this is Commissioner Cohen. I just joined the meeting.
Are you all able to see my screen?
We are not seeing it, Jillian. If you'd like, we could share it from HTV side.
Yes, please. It would be 23-08.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, I cannot see the slides.
Jillian, they should be up on WebEx. If you open up WebEx, we do have, right now, we're on slide one.
Okay, I'm not seeing that, so. I guess I'll just begin. Sorry?
I'm sorry. Is everyone else on WebEx seeing the presentation?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I can't see it, so I will just ask that you, you know, change the slide after.
Will do.
This is Jillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting a briefing on HCCPA 23-08, which is Armond Drive and Soccer Avenue. Next slide, please. Some background on this request is that it's a small-scale privately-initiated map amendment on two parcels totaling approximately 9.81 acres. This particular site has been breached previously, but it's been revised. It was previously three parcels. It's now been revised to two parcels. The request is to change the site from public/QuasiPublic and Residential 4 over to Residential 6. Next slide, please. This, as mentioned, this plan amendment, you've seen this before. It's been continued from the April 2023 cycle of map amendments. It's located in the western portion of unincorporated county in the urban service area, and it's located within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. Next slide, please. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. It's located east of Hanley Road and Armond Drive and on the north side of Soccer Avenue. The site is currently vacant. Surrounding uses include single-family residential on all sides and a public school and park located immediately adjacent to the site. The Veterans Expressway is located east of the site, and there are a couple of townhome and condo developments located to the west. Next slide, please. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site. Currently, the subject site is designated as Residential 4 and Public/QuasiPublic. As you can see, there's mainly Residential 4 located to the north. To the south is Public/QuasiPublic. To the southeast is Residential 6. And to the southwest and northwest, you'll see some Residential 20. Further outside of this map, to the east, is suburban mixed-use 6. And also, I should note that the green marking that you see here on the map is the coastal high hazard area. This site is not located within it, but it does border it on the north side. Next slide, please. This is the proposed future land use map for the site. They're requesting to change it to Residential 6. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the potential impacts of changing the site to Residential 6. Currently, the land use designations would allow for consideration of up to four dwelling units and approximately 106,000 or 106,000 square feet of non-residential development. The proposed amendment would maintain suburban-scale neighborhood commercial uses at a floor-area ratio of 0.25, but would increase the residential density to a potential 58 dwelling units. Next slide, please. That does conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the first item? Seeing none, if we can go to A2?
Yes, sir. That is also Ms. Jillian Massey.
Okay, let me just, if HTV could pull up my presentation, and for some reason, I'm not able to see it. So again, I'll just prompt you through the slides if that's okay. Let me know when you're seeing it on the screen, please.
We should be ready when you are, Jillian.
Okay, this is 23-16. Again, Jillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. This briefing is on 13320 Kane Road. Next slide, please. Some background on this request is that it's a privately-initiated small-scale map amendment located on two parcels that total approximately 3.87 acres. The request is to change the site from Residential 4 to light industrial planned. Next slide, please. Again, this is one that you've seen in the past. The request has been slightly revised. This is a map amendment that's been continued from the July 2023 cycle. The site's located in the urban service area in the northwestern portion of unincorporated county, and it's within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. Next slide, please. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. It's located on the west side of Kane Road and north of Gunn Highway. The site is located to the east of the Veterans Expressway. According to the Hillsborough County Property Appraiser, the site is currently vacant and owned by the church that's located immediately to the south. Other surrounding uses mainly include single-family detached residential and light commercial uses along Gunn Highway. Next slide, please. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site. Currently, it is designated as Residential 4, which allows for consideration of residential uses at up to four dwelling units per gross acre and suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office, multipurpose, or mixed-use projects that are limited to 0.25 floor-area ratio and subject to commercial locational criteria. The site is completely surrounded by the Residential 4 designation, and further south across Gunn Highway is designated as Residential 6 and Residential 9. Next slide, please. This is the proposed future land use map for the subject site. The proposal is to change the designation from Residential 4 to light industrial planned. The light industrial planned designation allows for consideration of light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehousing, and rural-scale retail uses pursuant to locational criteria. Residential uses are not permitted in this category. Next slide, please. The slide outlines the potential impacts from changing the site from Residential 4 to light industrial planned. Currently, up to 15 dwelling units can be considered on that site, and a change to light industrial planned would not allow for consideration of residential uses at all. Under the Residential 4 designation, up to approximately 42,000 square feet of non-residential development at a floor-area ratio of 0.25 can be considered, subject to locational criteria. The change to light industrial planned would allow for approximately 126,000 square feet of non-residential development at a floor-area ratio of 0.75. So the amendment would eliminate the possibility of residential uses and introduce light industrial uses. And I should note that this application has a concurrent rezoning that will come forward with this application. Next slide, please. That does conclude this presentation. If you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments? A2? Seeing none, if we can go to the last CPA item?
Yes, sir. Next, we have item A3. Ms. Melissa Dickens will be presenting. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. I'm just going to share my screen. Is that visible to you all?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Again, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. This item is HCCPA 23-18. This amendment proposes changes to the text of the Comprehensive Plan, specifically the policies within the One Water chapter that pertain to water and wastewater in the rural area. A little bit of background on this request. This is a publicly-initiated amendment to the One Water chapter. This was requested by EPC staff that we look into some of these issues. This is also consistent with policies within the Comprehensive Plan to further reduce potential negative impacts of septic. The primary intent of the amendment is to modify the language to address potential negative impacts from septic tanks. We have also looked at the overall water and wastewater policies in the rural area and propose some additional modifications. This amendment was developed with technical review and support from EPC as well as staff from Hillsborough County Water Resources and Development Services. And one note, this is the Comprehensive Plan amendment. There is also a corresponding LDC amendment as well. And I did see a hand raised. I can't see who that is. I just wanted to pause and...
Well, it's Commissioner Owen, but I'll wait till you're done. Go ahead. Yeah.
Sure thing. I wanted to start out by sharing some context about the Comprehensive Plan and what the language states today related to water and wastewater in the rural area. So the Comprehensive Plan has the urban service area where utilities, water and wastewater are allowed and enabled. And then there is the area outside of the urban service area, the rural area, where water and wastewater are not permitted to be extended unless they meet certain exceptions identified within the Comprehensive Plan. Those exceptions include serving a planned village such as RB2, WVR2, serving a project that has established vested rights, addressing a documented health hazard, serving a public school, or certain properties that are within the wellhead resource protection areas or Tampa Bay water wellfield mitigation areas and meet certain criteria. Also, within the Comprehensive Plan, there is language pertaining to properties that are located along an existing line, so immediately adjacent to an existing line. Those properties are allowed to connect with a single-service connection and also meeting some additional criteria. There's also some overarching language within the Comprehensive Plan related to extension and connection exceptions. So things like the party responsible for paying for the utilities, ensuring that utilities do not further density and intensity increases, and technical requirements as well. And then there is policy direction within the One Water chapter that is intended to minimize any adverse impacts of septic tanks. And this slide outlines the proposed change. The primary intent, as I mentioned, is to reduce any negative impacts coming from septic tanks. This was done at the request of EPC. These new policies would allow a utility extension for a documented adverse environmental condition attributable to either septic or private and franchise infrastructure or to prevent the clustering of new septic tanks in areas that are prone to flooding or in environmentally sensitive areas. There are a number of criteria and limitations that staff have developed to speak to this clustering such as distance from the urban service area, the overall size, the density, and the location. So the intent is to keep it very limited with respect to clustering of new septic tanks. And the change also updates the utility connection policies to allow those parcels that are adjacent to existing lines when subdividing to connect the additional parcels within the subdivision. So in lieu of those properties that are adjacent being connected to water and wastewater and the remainder of the properties being on well and septic, this amendment would enable the subdivision to connect. There are a number of criteria and limitations that we have included as part of this amendment to ensure that the utility service would only serve that subdivision and would not be leapfrogging or extending additional subdivisions in the rural area. Finally, there is a new policy being proposed to address unique circumstances that come up from time to time in cases of overriding public interest that would allow an additional exception. This would be at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners, and it is intended to be utilized for, again, those situations where there is public use or an overriding public interest. And then we've also included some additional miscellaneous provisions that assist in clarity and cleaning up the language. And this concludes the Comprehensive Plan text change portion of the presentation. I am available for questions, or I know that there is a corresponding LDC change, so I wanted to see what the board's pleasure was in terms of how we address questions. Thanks.
Yeah, we'll address, I mean, I guess there could potentially be overlap, but we'll address questions to this CPA now, and then we're going to close the meeting and then reopen. And perhaps there'll be additional questions at that time after that presentation. But Commissioner Owen, first?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I'd like for us to take a look at or something I would be for amending in the LDC is this quarter-mile kind of artificial restriction on hooking up to water in the rural service area. You know, I just, the health concerns, the environmental concerns, as well as situations like, I know most of the commissioners have spoken to the poor gentleman who has the Burger King off Macintosh and has a really inability to hook into our water. And to me, it just seems like this artificial number that we came up with, and maybe there is a purpose behind it that I don't know. But, you know, we've got to start getting people off septic because of the environmental concerns. And I really think that we need to take a look at amending the LDC to allow for that in the rural service area just because of the negative impacts, like I said, to the environment. I know the ag community is behind that. So that is something, I don't know the appropriate time to take that up if that's something that would have to, you know, obviously come before the board to vote on. But I definitely think that it's time for us to address this, like I said, this quarter-mile artificial barrier for hooking up with water in the rural service area. I understand this impacts a lot of my district, but I definitely am, you know, the more that I look at this, you know, I think it's time for us to start doing what we can to get folks off septic and onto water. And I think this quarter-mile restriction really inhibits us from being able to do so. So I would like, again, if you could comment on how that needs to be addressed or how that needs to come before the board.
Yeah, sure. So the quarter-mile would be when there would be septic tank clustering happening in an area. That's where the quarter-mile limitation is specified as part of this amendment. This amendment is not proposing changes to the overall urban service area, rural area policy. Something like the Burger King, I believe, would be addressed in this amendment because it would fall under the, kind of, the overall public, you know, if there is an overall hazard or if there is, you know, at the board's discretion that something rises to that occasion, that could be addressed. I also, I know you all have been hearing a number of presentations on the future land use section and looking strategically at areas to expand the urban service area so that topic may also be addressed in terms of the location as well.
So we could not address amending and removing that quarter-mile restriction in this? Is that a possibility? Because, you know, I would like to address that or have it come before the board.
The quarter-mile that's proposed as part of this amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could address that. We would need to talk with, you know, the technical experts and see if, you know, certainly, you know, I know there are, and I don't want to speak for Water Resources, but, you know, I know there are some technical and financial limitations in terms of when you start extending out too far. So we might need to talk with them in terms of what would be appropriate, but we can certainly examine that specific.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Richard Cohen?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Owen, that was, you were going down a road. I was going to go down in terms of this new catch-all exception for the B OCC. I mean, essentially, what you're saying with this language is that if they petitioned us, we could make a decision on a case-by-case basis to allow connection where we thought it was warranted in the public interest. Is that essentially what you're saying?
Under, yeah. So the language under 4.3.2 that is proposed, that enables a process for the B OCC to make a determination in the public interest. There are certain criteria that we have included for review, things like, you know, consistency with the overall Comprehensive Plan, how it addresses public health, safety, and welfare. But that is where that provision would take place.
But it essentially would make it into something akin to our land use hearings where we would listen to the evidence and make a decision?
Yeah, I mean, the specifics of the process, we haven't identified at that at this stage, but that is, I think, the intent, is to have some sort of formalized process so that when there are these unique circumstances, there is an opportunity for it to come before you and have that information be shared.
I mean, I think, notwithstanding other things that might be tweaked about this, I think it would be very good to have that process in place. And I think that, for the reason that Commissioner Owen said, we really have an interest in getting septic tanks removed and having, you know, things connected to the decentralized system. So to the degree that we have any kind of control over it, I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Richard Kemp?
Thank you. To the extent that this is used, it's going to have massive fiscal impacts on the county and its infrastructure. And so I have several questions about that. I think there's something like in the urban service area already, something like 65,000 people who are not, who don't have, are not connected to water and wastewater at this time within the urban service area. To me, that should be a priority in terms of having this done. They're all very, you know, those areas... terms of having this done. They're all very, you know, those areas are close to water all, all the time. I, you know, and the, I mean, they're all over the county, these sixty-five thousand uh places. It's one of the reasons, even with the low water pressure system, that Ruskin and Wy Mama haven't been able to um, uh, develop and and um, and do a- areas um, you know, commercial um, like they have wanted to. So is there any provision in this in terms of prioritizing? It would seem that the urban service area um that already needs it, has been without it for fifty, sixty, seventy years and has more intense impacts environmentally um should be prioritized in this.
Yeah, and um, we do have, I didn't mention it as part of the presentation, but great point, Commissioner Kemp, there is language within the existing one water chapter that prioritizes uh septic to sewer within the urban service area. So we do have some policy language there. Um, that is not, you know, we, we, we didn't specifically reference it as part of this presentation, but that language to connect the the low pressure systems and the the systems within the urban service area, that language exists today within the comprehensive plan, and this language is not proposing to to modify that.
Um, also, in terms of um, all of these, you know, it's one of the reasons I can't see moving the urban service line if we, and by that I mean the water enterprise system, I assume, or the general fund, I'm not sure which, um handles the cost of the um, you know, sewer and wastewater infrastructure, which is very expensive. So um, do, do we have that laid out? Like, is there AGRF and their personal fees, AGRF and wastewater connections happen, I understand, to every single resident or business that has this? But in, but the fees that normally, or the payments that normally the county would make um, in terms of this, if it's within the urban area or outside, um, how is, how is that uh calculated or addressed?
Yeah, that, that's a question I'd probably have to ask uh my colleagues in water resources who may be on the call to to answer. That's not something that that planning commission staff has familiarity with.
Hey.
George, I think you're muted.
You're muted, George.
George, can you hear us? We are not hearing you. George, you may need to uh, on the downward arrow next to mute button, uh, click the downward arrow and click the audio settings and change your microphone. Uh, you're muted right?
Now?
Yes, now.
Is it got it now? We hear you now, George. Okay, great. Yep, sorry about that. So um, Commissioner Kemp, um, yes, within the urban service area, you know, you you know as well as anybody, we have a, we have a whole bunch of septic tanks that uh, we need to take offline. And um, you know, that's a very expensive proposition. You're, you're absolutely right. And, you know, the expense of that program really i- is all in the restoration work. The the pipeline is not the the uh, the the issue. It's restoring streets and sidewalks and yards and everything. That's where the real expense is. You know, we've kickstarted this program um with significant grant funding from uh the state and from the feds. And so that's gonna take us um through the next couple of years. But after that, you know, the intent is to have a cost sharing with the communities that we take offline. And the cost sharing typically is a sixty forty split, sixty percent county-funded, forty percent homeowner-funded. And that seems to be what is typical across the state and other municipalities that have been engaging in septic-to-sewer programs. So that would be our, that would be our, our, you know, our idea of moving forward once the grant funding runs out. Cause right now with the communities that we're working on, Gibsonton, Palm River, uh Ruskin and Wy Mama, and some in Town and Country, um, the grant funds um are, you know, they don't, they don't have uh too many guide rails on in terms of how the money can be used. So we're doing a lot of onsite work that would typically be the homeowner's share. And the reason we're doing that is to have a successful program. You know, what we've learned over the years with line extensions to existing communities is um, you know, homeowners have a a real struggle uh writing a four, five, six thousand dollar check. So um, we're trying to make this as successful as possible uh funding most of all of the, all of the work, and we think it's gonna be incredibly successful when we're done. Going to outside the uh urban service area. Outside the urban service area, if you go too far, then the cost of that connection becomes extraordinarily high. So I I don't know that a quarter mile was arbitrary, um, but it certainly is that reasonable distance that you could extend a water line, extend a sewer line without it becoming um either a problem with our system or uh an expense that's just too great to bear for that one customer or two customers that you're extending it to. So I think there's a little bit of uh engineering judgment that has to go into how far outside the urban service area we go.
Um, I I appreciate that. Um, the other thing that I think is, it's, and I I've learned this from you when I've asked about these questions to some extent, because when it goes out very far, one of the problems is the water pressure, which I I have been hearing already still about from um areas of South County now, you know, um, because it has to, and that's expensive to, as an operational uh to to, as I understand it, to maintain that water pressure and it can do damage to the pipes if it's overdone or underdone um, or or the, overdone, or if it's underdone, then people don't get the the water service. Um, but the other is, I think in the future, we have to remember too, that for a limited population um, to to extend the pipes out further far is going to cost money. And even if they pay it initially, it's going to be our problem in the future. And by that, I mean, everybody that is on our enterprise uh water system in unincorporated Hillsborough County. And the further out and the less, the further out they go, the more expensive it is. And in the future, we have to replace them, we have to maintain them, we have to do the water pressure for them. And it becomes a situation where people that are more dense are, will be subsidizing people that are um more remote. And I'm just wondering if any of that is built into like monthly operations costs or anything. But honestly, it seems like it should be otherwise. Brandon and Town and Country will be subsidizing like remote um lesser populated areas. And and it will be very expensive. We had commissioners trying to figure out how to make our water bills less. Um, and they're gonna be, I mean, you're just throwing this, kicking this can down in the future, you're gonna have commissioners that'll be pulling out their hair, but everybody else will be um paying. Um, you know, it'll wa- it will be other in areas subsidizing the um, these long extended areas. I mean, a quarter of a mile, that, I I'm gonna respect your judgment on that and think that that's probably the most it should do. Um, and and it's just the reality of an infrastructure. I mean, the same thing goes for roads. It's just we see them. So I I'll just um leave it with that. And um, I I'm very concerned about the intersection between our resources and how this gets done. Sure, it'd be lovely, it'd be lovely to have like, you know, great things everywhere, but it's the reality of of some of how um the geography and the costs are.
Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. George, where is the um, where is the new one water campus located at?
It's located on State Road six seventy-two out at our um, our solid waste landfill facility, which is outside the urban service area. It's in the rural area.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for saying that. That was uh, that's kind of exactly my point when we're, we're talking about this. I do, I do agree with Commissioner Owen. Um, there's a lot has been said, but the, the actual water plant is, is way out um outside of the urban service area itself. So when we're saying, when we're putting kind of arbitrary um quarter-mile statements, as you know, getting like, getting these changes, loo- look, look at what we're going through right now to get this code changed and getting wildly different um minds to agree on changing this code is, what is that gonna do to people in the future? Um, I, you know, when it, a lot was said, even if it, I was very shocked to just hear um somebody talk about who's gonna be paying for what and the people on the um enterprise fund. You know, I was the only commissioner on this board that revealed um that the um water charge increases that was just approved six to one against me. Fifty percent of those increases are used to go towards future capacity of new residents that are not even on the the resource fund. So we, we can't continue to tell people that the resource, the enterprise fund is a user fee. That, that at this point, that's a lie. The re, the enterprise fund is is not a um user fee anymore. The enterprise fund, um, I I offered up a way that I um think that we should um revisit um to get it back to being a true user fee, which is utilizing the policies that this board has had in place for almost thirty years, um, which is to utilize the CIT to supplement future growth water needs, which is what fifty percent of our increases should have been subsidized with out of future CIT that's coming. Um, I, I don't agree that since we already know that the water facility is out there, we know that um, we know that the septic tanks for people like my dad that will use an old refrigerator as a septic tank, um, and they become mismanaged and become very environmentally insensitive, that we need to offer up an environmentally friendly alternative. And if um, you know, Mr. Gormly, we just had a a meeting yesterday talking about ways to promote um developers that if they want to participate in something that we provide tools and if they want, if we find out some tool that says, hey, you can pay for it um and whatever future fees we see will go into operating it. And then um, as people decide to opt in to septic or whatever, then we can reduce that operating fee, whatever it is. But for us to just arbitrarily restrict it to this already invisible line with another quarter mile invisible line, when our own water department is outside of the invisible line, it it does. It seems arbitrary and anything that, I I know that you're trying to get a working area, but when we establish a working area, we're identifying what good can come from it of trying to be semi-restrictive, but then we're not saying what bad comes from it, such as the Burger King. I think there's a school that's like right near um a water line that can't even get on the water and sewage lines. So the school itself is now restricted because of the arbitrary lines that have been um drawn. And it, it seems overly restrictive to where we um kind of cut off the arm to save the foot situation. Um, so I don't know. I would like, I would like a, a deeper conversation before we approve whatever the quarter mile line is and the, it, it sounds like there might be a process, but we don't know what the process is. But we're gonna vote to approve the quarter mile line on what a process that we don't know what that's going to look like. That also seems um dangerous to do for me. So I just, I look forward to whatever um conversation we can have about this one um restriction. So I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And uh, those are good points. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, I think kind of what you were alluding to too, if the customer wants to bear the cost, they, they can pay it, you know, we should give them the option. Um, and I know we kind of got off on board discussion, almost making arguments for and against, which I think would be appropriate for another day. You know, there's a workshop. So just to circle back around, I don't know if this question's more for Adam or Ms. Dickens, is, so so what is the next step if if, if we wanted to make this amendment, if the, if the board ultimately wanted to vote with a majority to, to remove the quarter mile or change it in some way, what would that next step be? If you could just kind of clarify that, cause I, I think Commissioner Wilson alluded to that too. We, we really don't know. So if you could just maybe clarify that. Thank you.
Sure, I'll ask Adam to to jump in uh as the attorney, but um, I believe that the board could make an emotion um, you know, at the na- at the public hearing to remove that. We also have an option. We could go back and, you know, we could continue this and have another discussion to provide more information on the distance requirements and criteria. Um, but but ultimately, in terms of of process, uh, I would defer to to Adam or Johanna.
Yeah. Commissioner, if I, if I could, I I do have a suggestion on that. Um, you know, that the quarter mile was, was, was uh recommended to have um some um control over how, how far out these line extensions could go. The way it is, the way it is structured, um, it would be kind of um, an allowance that somebody could utilize. And so the quarter mile would be, we, we have a comfort level of that. If the desire was to have more, more flexibility there, um, I think that, 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 you know, wanna have, have some water resource input on this as well, but I think this could be structured as a, something that would come to the board for a decision, much lo- much like the, the language that that is um, that is proposed in um, four point uh, three point uh, three, I believe. Um, so, you know, I, I think what I'm suggesting is, if we want to explore the quarter mile, that that it perhaps be something that gets looked at on a case-by-case basis. In some cases, it might be a quarter mile is, is, is an, you know, appropriate limitation. In some cases, it might be not, not necessarily as applicable. So the Burger King is, as an example, is pretty far in in the rural service area, but it is proximate to an existing line that is serving a school. So, you know, perhaps, perhaps having a, 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 a process where the board would, would be able to uh, receive the information on what the cost and feasibility and impacts of a further extension would be, and that could be presented to the board and and the board makes a decision on it, as opposed to something that is just something that 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 could, that could be um opted into by an applicant.
Okay, yeah, and thank you. I, and I'll um, I I don't want to labor this anymore. So I, I just wanted to know that process because uh, you know, I think it would be appropriate for a presentation and so that commissioners can, you know, give their opinions and flesh out whatever they need to flesh out, but as to ultimately, you know, vote on something. So I, from what you're telling me is an agenda item with a presentation from whoever we so designate. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And and if I, and I could, I'll just delve a li- a little bit into the land development code side of this. Um, uh, we're gonna talk about the, the land development code amendment, but essentially, as it's, as it's drafted, it's essentially reflecting the proposed language in the, in the one water element. So substantive, so substantively, there's not really a difference between what the, what the code is saying and and what the um, um land development code is saying. There's a little bit more specificity in the code. But in in terms of um, the, the language in four point three point two and and the um convergence or or clustering of of septic tanks, uh, believe that we could structure a process in the land development code where that comes to the board either as part of a zoning request, uh, such as you saw yesterday with, with the Lutz Prep School, or as a standalone um, um, uh, process, notice process that would come to the board if if the um extension or or expansion of services sought and it's not associated with a, with a rezoning. So I, I think that this, I take this feedback that the board is providing here and, and um, and and add that process to the proposed land development code language, if that would be acceptable and it's something the board can consider um at that point.
Ms. Lorton, did you want to make a comment?
I, I didn't know if that was appropriate if um, for to, if I'm not called upon, but um, thank you, Commissioner Hagan. I I'll make it brief. Obviously, we're being mentioned that we, this is initiated by us. Um, originally, when One Water came out in twenty twenty, we had comments. It was very simple. Um, talked to uh Sam El Robby, our water director. He's on the call. And we, we submitted our comments and we spent a long time crafting them. And we were asked to remove them the morning of One Water. And, cause everyone was squarely over the urban service line, but here- But here's where we're coming from. If you can hook up to a water line, it's environmentally better than a packaged plant would be next. Septic, obviously, is last. We don't want to make rural individuals have to hook up to water, but if they have the ability to do that, it makes environmental sense. Forget the urban service line where that exists or how that exists. I've lived in the urban service area at several locations in River View, the Onasasa, with no urban services. And at the time, you know, Mr., obviously, the water department has to have capacity. So, you know, what, where that line ends or how it gets constructed, but this has been done before. If everyone's familiar with Idlewild Church, you have Ladera, it's across the street. They were going to put a bunch of septic systems there in a wellhead protection area surrounded by lakes. And Denise Lane at the time, years ago, was saying, you know, no, 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 but then she said yes, because the hookup line was right there. So they reduced density by twenty percent or ten percent, and they were allowed to hook up to infrastructure. And at that time, it made sense. And so Mr. Gormly may be right on a case-by-case basis, or how you look at it, really comes down. And for developer, if a developer wanted to initiate putting in the infrastructure to do right by the environment, that makes sense. It shouldn't be, and maybe it could help the county by having extra infrastructure that a taxpayer is not, you know, I mean, you know, paying for, but a developer is paying for. So in 2020, where when One Water came out, with our comments were removed, and it was supposed to come back, I think in twenty-one and twenty-two. And finally, in twenty-three, Commissioner Myers, thank you very much, helped get the ball rolling when I kind of explained to her why I thought these comments were important. So it's being initiated now because it kind of came back for it in twenty-three. But I think flexibility, and instead of retrofitting sixty-five thousand septic systems and all that cost, if case by case, you can create developments that already have reclaimed water and septic and all that infrastructure, you're going to build it anyway. So you're either going to put septic or you're going to hook it up, because they're allowed to have the, the, the development. Now, I agree with Mr. Cassidy, you can't have infrastructure going to two or three houses. You know, that, or, you know, you have to, there has to be some planning. But for us, from an environmental standpoint, and I'll get, final thing I'll say is the Burger King. Everyone's talked about Lutes Prep coming forward, but the, not only where Burger King is, McDonald's is there, there's a mobile home park, and there's, and they're in a low water table in Plant City, there's constantly issues, and there's nothing Burger King can do. And Strawberry Crest Line, you can just walk over to it and hook up into it. So to me, those are just common sense, pragmatic solutions that help the environment. But you guys have to consider all the moving parts of future zoning, development, and your water infrastructure. I do know that Mr. Cassidy and his team have put together a lot of capacity in the One Water facility that's going to come forward for septic. And so he would have to tell you what that looks like, but I think there'll be plenty of capacity for these case by, case by cases coming forward. Don't think it should be a mandate, but should be an option. So that's why we're here today. We originally had these comments in three years ago, and we're here to help and assist in any way. We're just trying to do something that makes environmental sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I just, I want to, that pretty much clears up what I was trying to get at is that whatever we're doing, it needs to be promoting good behavior, not restricting it from happening. And I understand that there's lots of growth concerns, et cetera, but at the same time, again, we can't shoot ourselves in the foot on, on those variables in mind. I'm not sure what comments were restricted three years ago or not. But I would say that since, you know, Ms. Lorton spoke up, and, and, you know, it's the EPC, you know, I've pointed this out before, in Hillsborough County, we voluntarily expend and have a very unique group of scientists, very educated, intelligent, and qualified environmental scientists, that we voluntarily spend about twenty-five million dollars a year of people's property taxes on. So we're either going to utilize them to the fullest extent possible and properly utilize them, or we're going to just sit here and openly say we're going to waste twenty-five million dollars a year of people's property taxes to make them feel good with the local EPC, but we're going to choose not to listen to them. So I'll rest there. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll just say, process-wise, when these come forward, should they, we should have a price tag on everyone, an evaluation that's done for that of how much, you know, county resources are needed or enterprise water resources or whatever it is that is there, and how much, you know, the, the, whatever, the privately initiated request would cover of that, how that would work.
Okay, thank you. If we don't have any other comments or questions on the coverage of plan amendments, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll immediately start Land Development Code text amendment workshop. So this meeting's adjourned, and then now I'll call to order Land Development Code text amendment workshop, and if we can have a roll call vote to establish attendance.
Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sepeda?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wilson?
Yeah.
You have a form, sir?
Thank you. And now I'm not sure who's going to introduce the first item or the only item.
So Commissioner, Israel Monsanto will, will present the substance of these amendments, and will be, this will be a very brief presentation. Again, the language that's in here is essentially reflective of the substantive changes in the comprehensive plan. We will take the comments that were provided at the comp plan workshop and, and, in this amendment, establish some process elements to get the ones that are decision-making elements to the board. And so with that, I'll ask Israel, Mr. Monsanto, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, to briefly run through the land development code amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services, and I believe Melissa has the slide. Ready? Thank you. At this companion text amendment, we will implement the rural area utilities policies that you just heard proposed for the updated One Water chapter of the comprehensive plan. There are two LDC sections, Commissioners, that are being proposed to be amended. LDC section four oh two oh two, which regulates and requires determinations for potable water and sanitary sewer, will be updated. And this is consistent with the proposed CPA policy changes for the criteria for connections to an existing water utility line in the rural service area. So the LDC will also include those requirements to be coded. For instance, the code will add the requirements indicated in the new policy four point, three point three for connections to existing water and wastewater lines. Additionally, the Land Development Code will add the new criteria to allow extensions of utility lines into the rural service area per policy four point, three point one. Lastly, the term and definition of single service connection from Land Development Code Part twelve oh one oh oh definitions is being replaced and clarified to be consistent with the new comprehensive plan amendment and code changes. The code today defines single service connection, and the definition is as a water or wastewater connection for a property adjacent to a county road right away or easement in which a utility line exists, a single service connection shall include no more than one meter for one property. The new term proposed is existing line connection, and the definition would add that existing line connection requires no extension of such line or other improvements to existing county infrastructure beyond what is necessary for such connections to be made. And also, references to single service connection required to include no more than one meter for one property is being removed from this definition. And we are available if you have any questions, and this concludes the, my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, LDC text amendment? Okay, Mr. Gormly, any other items?
No, sir, that concludes our workshop for today. Thank you.
Okay, no other comments, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.